Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, January fourteenth, approximately nine P. M. We're gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I'm Don Swiker. This is Mike Steinis to my left and to my right. Lisa Smith for the Auditor's Office, Bjorn with the I.T. and Luanne over there for the Executive Assistant and Brittany in the background covering the press. First on the agenda, we have Jayden Chekel, County Engineers' Office.
You're up. Morning.
Morning. First thing on the agenda are a couple of entrance permits. I'll go through one for each individually. The first one is for Dan Davis. It'll be on Hundredth Street in the South Fork Township. It's just a field entrance. Meets all the site distance requirements. It does not require a culvert. It's at the high point of the ditch. So, no issues on our end, so we recommend approval on this entrance.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve Dan Davis's South Fork Township section three, one hundred street, field entrance. Any other discussion? Good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up is a very similar one. This one is a farm entrance for Steve Borman on two hundred and sixteenth Avenue in the what township? The Richland? Richland. Okay, thank you. There it is. This one also meets all the site distance and does not require a culvert and it does not have one either because it actually isn't existing entrance. It's just one that's been there forever, so looking to get it permitted. Because I think they want to build eventually onto a shed they have. So, to make this a legal driveway, to go through the entrance permit process. So, meets everything for us, so we recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve the field entrance permit for Steve Borman on two sixteenth Avenue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And before you go first, do we have a limit on how wide driveways can be?
Yes, our entrance, they can go up to seventy feet. Our policy states, I think, anything between fifty and seventy feet, they have to have some sort of documentation while they're requesting it.
Why would you need something that big? I mean, that's basically saying you can't make a normal corner on a road.
I know a lot of them are related that have come through when they are requesting large widths are whether it's for hog confinement or grain bedside where they're gonna be having semis come in and out frequently.
I mean, that's wider than basically an intersection. You gotta be able to turn on that. I mean, I don't, I don't understand why they need to be. Okay.
Yes. I think it's in the policy. It's either in the policy or in the permit requirements.
I thought we shrunk that down.
I'll verify, but I'm almost certain it's up to seventy, but between fifty and seventy, just needs supplemental documentation or request information.
I really don't see any seventy feet, I don't think, as far as unless they're on the hilltop, but.
We have a couple new ones that went in.
I mean, there have been some in the last year. I know that had one permitted every.
Somebody was asking me and I said, well, we don't really get how wide they are, you know.
I mean, there is such thing as, I mean, these grain truckers and jellies and whatnot, what you're talking about are get longer and longer and sixty-five feet and you've got soft shoulders. You're not off on the shoulder and you're, yeah, I don't.
Well, now since our policy thankfully doesn't require us to maintain driveway tubes anymore, I mean, now since all that expense is on the property owner, unless they truly need it that wide, I feel most of them aren't gonna request that way because they have to buy that much extra feet of pipe as well. So, I myself don't see.
I'm just thinking seventy foot, you're taking away drainage from a.
The big thing, I probably should get, I gotta get caught up on the Creighton R typical standard for the driveways where it requires that low point. I know I prevent currently kind of show that, but it, to me, it needs to be shown clearer. So, that'd be one thing I, I need to get working on is get that to clearly show that the low point in there. So that way, they don't drain right to our road. And granted, I know some of our ones that have been there forever do, but as new ones get put in, they have the proper drainage pass.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're good. Next up is regarding Morehead Bridge closure. So this is a resolution to just legally, you know, call it legally, but to
Official?
Official. There you go. That's better. Thank you. Term officially close it. Still in discussions with our inspection consultant and potential bridge repair contractor to determine best, best pathway forward. Our inspection consultant still has to do some deeper digging into stuff because it's not, you know, they're gonna basically sign and certify a repair. I mean, they're putting their liability on, so they wanted to make sure with both slate or doing some deeper digging into it to see what it would entail. So what I wanna do is what their cost would be to prepare plans and specs and then also for a contractor to do that repair, what those two costs would be. So combine that. Okay, what is it gonna take to open the bridge back to its fifteen-ton weight posting limit? And I think I mentioned last week, at least, by then I'll mention it again, I did submit Morehead Bridge for the County Bridge Construction Fund. So, by the end of March, we should know whether or not we were awarded any money for it. And just to me, I'd like to wait till we know that fact before we determine best way forward. But in the meantime, I'm getting some pricing. So when that time comes, we can talk about it and make a determination at that point. But with this, to get back to the resolution, this is just to, like you stated, officially close the bridge until we can get it back open in some fashion.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution ten ninety-three zero one, one four, twenty twenty-five as presented.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve Resolution ten ninety-three oh one, fourteen, twenty twenty-five to close Morehead Bridge on Seventy-Fourth Street. Any other discussion?
Have you had feedback, concerns, comments?
When it was first closed, there were, I've not received any since. I mean, there was some frustrated individuals and I understand and just told them that closure is, I mean, it's geared a hundred percent towards public safety. So, we're doing what we can. And right now, I'm looking at the five-year program too to see how things fit in with the bridges we did get funding for to get those happen and where we're sitting. But at this point, I just, I don't have a final answer yet on how we're gonna proceed until.
No, well, I hardly understand that. Building a bridge is a procedure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next up is better side of things, a resolution to remove bridge weight restrictions. There is three bridges and they are three that have just been replaced this year because they were weight posted this year and they're replaced. They no longer require that. So, first one is on two hundred and twenty-fourth Street on Butler Township. That was a day labor daily run one hundred and thirty-sixth Street in Farmers Creek Township. And then the last one was the one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue one here in South of Town in the South Fork Township. No other bridges within our current inventory of bridges that have weight restrictions have not decreased in bridge weights. So, this one is simply just to remove three of them that were posted to no longer be posted.
Motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve Resolution to establish good bridge weight restrictions, removing the bridge on two twenty-fourth Street, one thirty-sixth Street, one eighty-fourth Avenue, Resolution ten ninety-four dash oh one dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion?
Just, we used to yearly get a report of our bridges that were posted and numbers and which were repaired and if we could get that sometime.
Okay.
Do you ever catching up or lacking behind or I'm sure we've been making good progress the last couple of years.
In the last few years, I think we would be at twelve.
Yeah, because two years ago we did six-day labors or one contract. Yeah, it's probably been.
We had a list of the twos, current bridges and weight limits on them and where.
Yeah, because also working with some of them, like that relates to the program. Reviewing with Clinton County on some bridges that are in our program that maybe can there be a repair done like to some of the existing piling to get it not weight posted to, if that is the one limiting thing and the rest of the bridge is good, can there be a repair done on that bridge to get it back open and let's, so we can prioritize some other bridges that may be warrant getting replaced. So, working through some of that and our guys have been from previous years inspections, there's notes of like remove trees and brush undergrowing because that doesn't help. And I know our guys have been doing that and Rick's been having the guys replace some deck plank. I know last year they did some to remove some postings. So yes, I'll get that and there've been working on steps getting to address some of that stuff.
Yeah. Any other discussion? I know. We're good. That's why I asked for any other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have unless you guys have any other questions on things.
No. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. Next up is, do we have anybody in the audience or either online or in person that would like to address the board today? I see we have a couple of unique faces. Anybody would like to address the board or, I don't, I can't. All right, cool. All right, did you?
I'm just here on behalf of Katie Whittington, but that's.
All right, stand up and state your name.
My name's Carson Bobo Song. I'm just here on behalf of Katie Whittington.
Oh, okay. This is your time if you'd like to say anything.
Oh, yeah. We just wanna let people know that the special election's on November twenty-eighth and we're hoping we can count on your support.
Good. Thank you very much. All right, from there, I saw Ruth walking around outside. Can we, is she out there?
Hey, Ruth.
That's all right. Next up, we have Ruth Upchurch from Veterans Affairs.
Morning. So, we, in Jackson County, we currently have four hundred and seventeen veterans and their families receiving a total of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars in, in benefits. In our office, we have fifty-five open claims that are awaiting decision and nineteen decisions were made in the last month. So that's actually quite a few more than we normally see. So that's wonderful. I had emailed this over. I don't know if you have a copy of the GDX report or not, the federal one. Okay. All right. It must not have gotten printed out. I can go through it next time too. That's okay. I'll just kinda hit some highlights of it and I can go through it more in detail next time. Our, so the, the federal government does this for the V.A. expenditures. So in the state of Iowa, they estimate that we have one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two veterans in the state of Iowa. In Jackson County, they estimate that we have one thousand, two hundred and forty-eight. So that's an estimate. It's not a, you know, down to the last veteran that we have. So that has actually, I did a a comparison, you know, from twenty eighteen all the way to, this is fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So our veteran population has actually gone down from twenty twenty-two by thirty-five. So that's, I don't know what that's due to, I guess. But our veterans benefits have gone up. So as far as the total expenditure in veterans benefits, we're looking at fourteen million, eight hundred and ten thousand as far as veterans benefits. Part of that's compensation and pension, part of that's education, vocational rehabilitation. That also includes medical care. So, those numbers are pretty big. Just in medical care, we're looking at five million, nine hundred and ten thousand of, is, that's a benefit that our veterans are receiving. So that's, that's great. The number of veterans that is, that are using the V.A. medical care has gone up from last fiscal, well, from fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twelve people. So we've got five hundred and thirty-five unique veterans that are using the V.A. healthcare system. So I will, I'll make sure you guys get a copy of this. We can go, I can go through it in more detail when you have it in front of you. So that's just kind of a nice breakdown for, and you can see all the counties in Iowa, how they're, how they're doing and how we compare. And then you can see the different states too, which is kinda interesting to see how that is working. This month, I have an article for the newspaper with information regarding V.A. healthcare. So there are individuals that are currently eligible that may have been told in the past they were eligible. So I'm trying to get that information out to say, hey, you're eligible now. Come apply. So that's kind of an important benefit.
Because of a change in policy or change?
Um, the PACT Act that was done in twenty twenty-two. It opened up for a lot of veterans who may not have been eligible because of their income before, but are eligible now because they were exposed to toxins or, you know, had things like that. Because when you're service-connected for something, you're eligible for care for that service-connected condition. But the PACT Act opened it up for a larger number of, of veterans to be eligible.
We certainly want them to take advantage of that. So to be, you know, to, to not know it. I know a lot of people don't read the paper. A lot of people, you know, it's hard, hard to get to them unless it's.
Yeah, yeah. So we're trying to get that information out there to let them know, hey, come in, ask us questions, you know, we'll help you apply. The V.A. really wants anybody to apply who thinks they might be eligible and then they'll make that determination. So, so that's easy enough for us to do. We can, we can help with that. I also was on KMAQ the beginning of January, just kinda talking about the, the department and, and what we do. As far as the Veterans Affairs Commissions go, I have two commissioners whose terms are up in June. So I've updated the application on the Jackson County website. I'll be reaching out to them to make sure they want to reapply and how, how that goes. So I've, we've updated that and have that put on there. Thanks to Bjorn, he did that for me.
So a question on that, Ruth. So you do put it out there for advertisement even if they do want to reapply? Is that correct?
What I was told was that everyone has to reapply now to be on the commission. I, I don't know because I've never done it before. So I, I can't say a hundred percent how that, how that works.
I know I've had people talk to me in the past about boards and commissions in general and how it seems sometimes it's hard. I think I would like to see it always advertised so people know there's a vacancy so they can apply. Because a lot of times people just say then it's always, they're always just full. They don't have a chance to really apply. So I think it would be nice to advertise just to see.
Okay. And that, like I said, I don't know how that process works. So I'll talk with Luanne and make sure that we, we know how that process works a hundred percent. So.
And it makes any difference anymore, but how is your commission gender balanced right now?
Yeah, I guess. We have two female veterans and we have three male, but that isn't, isn't a requirement anymore from what I understand. So, yes, it's good.
And a side note, that GDX was emailed out on the tenth, so I went back, looked and I found it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sorry. I would have brought you copies, but I didn't. Sorry about that. I should have called and made sure. The other interest, on January eighth, twenty twenty-five, Department of Veterans Affairs announced new cancer presumptives for the Gulf War veterans and post-nine-eleven veterans. The, the nice thing about presumptive conditions is that the veterans don't have to prove their service caused the condition to receive benefits. The V.A. automatically assumes service connection for the condition. So they added several new cancers to that, which is unfortunate because that means our veterans are dealing with it, but it is good that the V.A. is accepting, you know, that these are, these are new conditions. So that's for our Gulf War veterans and our post-nine-eleven veterans. So it includes acute and chronic leukemias, multiple myelomas, myelodysplastic syndromes, myelofibrosis, urinary, bladder, uretra and related, I'm gonna say this wrong, geniturnary cancers, whatever those are. So if we know veterans that are dealing with those things or different types of cancers, they should give us a call. So that's specifically for the Gulf War and post-nine-eleven.
Okay.
But yeah, that's my.
Good to get that information out there.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
You bet.
Very warm.
Yes.
Next up is Frank Freebird, Freebird from Waste Authority.
Uh, got my board of directors ready to be confirmed. All the little towns have put their people for it and you guys traditionally nominate like Gene from all the townships I know. Oh, you're on board.
So there's, is there two new members? Is that what you're gonna have?
Jason Gerz from Preston is taking Dennis Driscoll's place and Ed Pickle is taking Rowling's place, Jim Rowling's place. Got any questions?
Is that something that goes through your board first in a meeting or is that, can we do this now?
The, it goes through all the little towns. They have a nominee. All the little towns put forth a nominee. Some of them have joint nominees. Sorry, I've got a cold. But, and then once all the nominees are, have been nominated, then it comes to the board and the board does the whole board of directors at one resolution.
But we can approve this resolution for that anyway.
Yes.
So we can approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve resolution as presented for, for the Waste Authority Director appointments.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve Resolution ten ninety-five dash oh one dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-five for the Waste Authority Director appointments from January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You get in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, fine.
All right. Becky's not down here yet. We're running a little ahead of schedule. Lisa, do you wanna go?
Certainly can. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January seventh, twenty twenty-five board proceedings and the January seventh and January ninth work session minutes as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the January seventh, twenty twenty-five board proceedings and the January seventh, twenty twenty-five and January ninth, twenty twenty-five work session minutes as written by Auditor Smith, authorized publication in official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of eight hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and one cent.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve the Auditor's Office authorization for the Auditor's Office to issue warrants on publication of claims listing in the amount of eight hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and one cent. And there was some bridge repairs in there and there was a truck purchase, the signed truck purchases in there and there was some rock and different things.
There's three bridge invoices.
Yeah. So I think the Engineers' Office had a little over six hundred thousand of that. So.
Progress.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant to AT&amp;T Mobility for forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for the mental health department cellphone service. This was something that was missed in the last claims period and we needed to get this paid. So we did do a handwritten warrant for it. We are allowed by resolution to do that. And that's why I'm asking for a motion today to approve the handwritten warrant.
Make that motion.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve the handwritten warrant to AT&amp;T Mobile for forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents for mental health department cellphone service. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs meeting minutes for the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'm to approve. Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve and accept place on file Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the meeting November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All that I have for the board today.
Luanne, you wanna?
Can we let Becky go first?
Oh, I didn't see you slip in. Sorry. Silence.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
We'll send this to you this morning. The first thing, our certificate of appointments. We did have two elected officials reelected effective January second of this year. With that being said, the certificates of appointments for their personnel need to be approved for their new four-year term. So I would ask for a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on certificates of appointment for Shelley Boy, First Deputy, Mary Stickley, First Deputy, Kalen Decker, Clerk, all under the auditor, Elisa Smith, and James Cracker, Chief Deputy, Brandon Beck, Sergeant, Daniel Blake, Brandon Coin, Joel Driscoll and Scott Hayer, Chad Rader, Melissa Schmidt and Wesley Unki, all deputy sheriffs under Sheriff Frank Hilber, all effective January second, twenty twenty-five through January first of twenty twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve certificates of appointment as stated. Want me to read those out?
No.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And there are three deputies that certificates were not issued for, Kane Cop, Rashman and Shane Nixon, just because they're still on probationary certificates that don't expire until this spring. So then their certificates will be for the remainder of this current term at that time. I do have one personnel action. There has been a PRN position filled in the Sheriff's Department for a jailer. I would ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Jonathan Heinz as a PRN Corrections Officer effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at an hourly rate of twenty-one forty-one, including authorizing the county auditor to issue biweekly paychecks for the same.
So moved.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve hiring of Jonathan Heinz as a PRN Corrections Officer effective December fifteen, twenty twenty-four at an hourly rate of twenty-one forty-one, including an authorizing the county auditor to issue biweekly paychecks for the same. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Title six compliance. So we are a sub-recipient, sub-recipient of federal funding from the DOT Highway Administration mainly for secondary road projects. There are regulatory compliance documents that have to be in place in order to receive that funding. Once they are approved, they're valid for five years or until there's a change in the chairperson. So we haven't done these. We've been required to do this since two thousand and thirteen. We haven't done it since twenty twenty-three when Mike was elected chair, at which time we renewed these documents. These are statements. These are posted, but throughout Jackson County, they're on all of our bid notices. Jeff recently did a bid. We did include the compliance information in there. Jayden uses them in all of their contracts and bid documents and all that good stuff. So with Don now being chair, I would ask for a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on the standard Title six nondiscrimination assurances.
I would make a motion and approve the chair signature.
I'm sorry.
Got a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on the standard Title nine or Title, yeah, Title six nondiscriminative discrimination assurances. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I would ask for a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on the Title six nondiscrimination standard. Whoops, I did that twice. Standard assurances. Sorry.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve an authorized chair signature on the Title six nondiscrimination standard assurances. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I would ask for a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on the Title six nondiscrimination policy statement.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve an authorized chair signature on the Title six nondiscrimination policies paper. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I can add, Don. I'll leave this stack of, thanks for your time. I'm sending back to Lisa and Luanne.
Good man.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, we'll start with the calendar. Um, from the end of the meeting today until about noon, we will have budget work sessions. Three thirty this afternoon is a McCocon River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And at four o'clock is the Ports of Eastern Iowa Authority meeting by Zoom for Nan. Wednesday, January fifteenth at one P M is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting by Zoom for Nan. And also over clock is the Jackson County Security Committee meeting for Nan, so keep making choices there, I guess. Five o'clock on Wednesday is the E C I A Council meetings. Um, in Dubuque, we're by Zoom for Mike. It's just one meeting for you. Just go to the council meeting.
There's a special meeting at eleven at two.
Okay. Thursday, eight A M to ten A M is the Jackson County L E P P C meeting, which is basically emergency planning for the county. That will be at the hospital for all of you. And then from ten thirty that morning until noon, we will have budget work sessions. I did give you about a half hour travel time in there. I know you don't need quite that much, but you'll have to have time to get back from the hospital to here. On Thursday at one o'clock is the Grant Wood City Byway meeting by Zoom for Nan. And I believe at six o'clock that night is Limestone Bluffs R C and D by Zoom for Don. Not sure I have a confirmation on that yet. Monday, January twentieth at three P M. The governing board meeting has been moved to the twenty-seventh. So that will be coming off of there. At five thirty on Monday is Together We Build Board meeting. I'll bet Together We Build for Don.
That might be moved to the twenty-seventh. I haven't heard yet.
That might also affect the next one, which is the steering committee, because generally you meet on the same night as at seven o'clock. So that would be for Nan. On the twentieth at seven o'clock, um, is a zoning commission meeting in the credit room for any of you that wanna go to that.
So at seven or at six? I thought they're made at six.
No, they're always the same time as you're Together We Build.
In the winter months, though, I think they move on.
They move to six, okay.
That's not public hearing, no. That's just a regular meeting for you.
Regular meeting. I think you can start early or something, right?
I don't know, they just.
Yeah, you're right, they do.
November to March or something, they move to six.
Um, our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January twenty-first at nine A M. That evening at five o'clock, I tentatively uh, think there will be a Conservation Board meeting that night, Hurstville, for any of you that wanna go to that. Um, also at six o'clock that night is Jackson County Economic Alliance for Don. And at seven o'clock is the Board of Health meeting in the credit room for Nan.
Did you send out a cancellation for that?
The Economic Alliance?
Yeah.
No, I told Kelly I don't think he'll be here for that. But I didn't send out a cancellation.
I just have to check and see. I swear, that would be the second.
We're gonna have to see.
I had one for my meeting yesterday morning too, but I knew it was still going on.
Yeah.
It seems like if I make any change at all to any of, anything on your calendar, then it sends out a cancellation. But it should also send up a notification for a new meeting. So we'll have to play.
Yeah, yesterday you sent out a cancellation for the Jinxie Gay, the Zoom, so I don't know.
I'm still working on, on figuring that one out, so. My apologies, it's confusing. I don't like it the way that works. Okay, for business today, um, we are talking mostly appointments. Um, discussion possible action on a conservation board appointment um, for a term that's expiring. So we reappointing or appointing someone to that for their five years to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-nine. Versus in that position has reapplied for the position. We also have another application. So I don't know what you wish to do about that.
So have we have any input so far from the board, Conservation Board? On any reappointments or Conservation Director? I guess I would like to have a little more time to, um, go over these two applicants. Two very good qualified applicants, the way it looks, and I would just like to.
Table, table that?
I would make a motion to table that, yes.
I'll second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to table decision on the reappointment or reappointment of the county conservation position. You wanna table it till next week?
That's fine.
Okay, we'll table it till next week. Any other discussion?
That is a five-year term, you said?
It is, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, discussion possible action on reappointing two members of the Pioneer Cemetery Commission to new three-year terms. Um, Cemetery Commission has recommended Mary Yokum and David Kuhn each be reappointed to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven.
Do we have applications on them or?
Not, uh, they did not fill out new applications. I could do that if you want me to, if you want me to, um, request that. They did not come to me.
We have an email here from George saying that on October eleventh twenty twenty-four, the commissioner has voted to renew the expiring terms of Mary Yokum and David Kuhn. Um, I believe the supervisors need to approve these renewed terms. Is this something we don't have the choice on or is?
No, you have complete choice. I don't, I don't, they were trying to kind of preempt having to re, I don't know what that was. Ordinarily, if you're, I know.
I'm just, I'm just, you put it in the bag, I'm just reading.
Well, that's the only way I know about it.
I know sometimes there's a rubber stamp appointment and sometimes we have ultimate day, so, um.
This has always been the supervisor's appointment. They will oftentimes, um, allow the Cemetery Commission to make a recommendation.
Yeah, I know, I don't know Mary that much. I know David, he's very active at it. He believes in it, so.
Do we have other applicants?
I did not receive any other applications.
And it was publicized.
It was.
Thoughts of the board?
I make a motion to approve them appointments as presented.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to reappoint, um, Mary Yokum and David Kuhn to the Pioneer Cemetery Cemetery Commission expiring terms of December thirty-first twenty twenty-seven. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um, discussion possible action to reappoint the Fairfield Township trustees. Fairfield Township is the only township in Jackson County where the supervisors make the appointment of the trustees and the clerk. And all the other townships, they are elected. So, um, the terms are expiring for David Franzen and Matt Franzen. Um, and I'm looking to have them reappointed to new terms, um, that would expire January first of twenty twenty-nine. I did notify both of them, um, that their terms were up and that if they did not wish to be reappointed, they should let me know. And I had not heard from either one of them.
How come that isn't the?
It's a January first thing, it's.
No, but I mean, why is this one township not?
They voted to do that. So how many years ago did they do that? It was a voted, something they voted in to have the supervisors make the appointments.
First off, I don't think twenty twenty-nine is correct. December thirty-first to twenty twenty-nine is not correct because you have all the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Well, it says January.
It expires on January first.
Our, uh, yeah, agenda says January first twenty twenty-nine, so.
It can't be twenty-nine. So you have all the twenty-five, all the twenty-six, all the twenty-seven.
Expires January first twenty twenty-nine.
So I have December thirty-first, okay, so.
Yeah, I think that, that will.
And our agenda says that the terms will expire January first.
Must have looked at the wrong line.
Or December thirty-first twenty twenty-eight.
January.
Correct, essentially the same day, yes.
Okay, so now back to your question. Um, so many years ago, it was a decision that the auditor made the decision to have all of the citizens, the rural citizens of Jackson County vote to decide, because we all know sometimes getting township trustees and clerks is not very easy. So it was the decision by the then auditor to put this question on the ballot. All of the citizens, rural citizens in Jackson County voted on it and only in Fairfield Township that they decide that they wanted new, newest supervisors to appoint them. Everybody else is still in the election process for clerk and trustee.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no, no, that's, yeah, so we can, we can at some point, if you, we can put it back on on, on the question again on a general election if you'd like, but I've just never. Never, because.
I mean, it makes sense to me that the people in their townships would vote for him, but that's, if they decided that that's the way they wanted, I don't.
Well, we are very, we put a lot of effort into making sure that we get a hold of these clerks and trustees when it's time to get reappointment. We send letters out to them and we encourage them to get their name on the ballot. So we do have a few situations, but it's not as bad as it used to be.
So again, uh, Luann, you said that you contacted them. You personally contacted them or was it email or any something you wanna sort? Are you personally?
I emailed Matt and I sent postcards to both of them.
Okay, so I guess maybe in the future, I'd like to fact to say, let me know, not, not the fact of let me know if you don't wanna be appointed. I want a confirmation from you that says, yes, I wanna be appointed. I, I, I think that's more of a, to say, you know, get a hold of me if you don't wanna be, well, you know what happens there.
Well, you don't know if they even got any of the notification type of deal, I guess, yeah. I agree with that type.
I mean, I'd like the confirmation to say, hey, yes, I do.
You're up for reappointment. Are you willing to do this? Yes or no? Contact me anyway.
And I don't know, does it have to be in an email? Does it have to have a paper trail or can?
Some kind of analogy could be good.
Yeah.
Well, if it's an email, we, we would have that as a paper trail.
Yeah, but, but she called him on the phone. They said, yes, I would know that.
Right.
You'd have to know that, I suppose.
Yeah, that's for that.
I make a motion to reappoint Matt and David for their four-year term.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to reappoint Fairfield Township Trustees or Fire, right, the Fire.
Township, Fairfield Township Trustees.
Fairfield Township Trustees, David Franzen and Matt Franzen for a four-year term expiring January first twenty twenty-nine. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, um, I'm also looking for, um, a motion to, um, reappoint benefited fire district trustees. Um, there is one trustee for each benefited fire district whose term expires every year. I talked to Steve Lukie and he is willing to be reappointed um, with reservations. He's not sure he can make it through the whole three-year term. He's not sure he's willing to do a whole three-year term, but he will go ahead and start and then he will talk about it if something comes up and he doesn't wanna finish the term.
Is that for Andrew specifically?
That's for Andrew specifically. They are, they are designated fire districts.
Right, and how many designated fire districts do we have?
Three.
Okay, are we reporting them all at the same time or all separate?
We do it all at the same time. Well, oh. Does it make any difference to you?
We have done in the past. We've appointed all three township trustees to each benefited fire district.
Okay, so you have one presented so far?
Right, um, Shelly, um, talked to, um, she talked to James Jacobs, but Joel Brown. We didn't have contact information for Joel Brown. Um, I don't always have good contact information for the benefited fire district trustees. And for Sebula is John Horst.
I, I, I struggle with believing it's hard to find contact information for people that live in Jackson County. And I believe that we should be able to contact anybody that we appoint or designate. And so I would struggle. I know, I know it says we didn't advertise these because of fire district residency. Um, is there a way we can advertise and say for this fire district? You know, because again, we have one person that says he'd be willing to do it, but not for the whole term and he's not quite sure. And we have two people we didn't talk to that, that that has done that in a group of three, that doesn't hardly constitute one vote, you know, because.
Okay, so we have appointment that agreed in Andrew.
Yes.
And Sebula, we need one for? And we haven't talked to really anybody? And what other district do we need one for?
Miles.
Miles, okay, just a suggestion. We've done this before, Don, is to advertise and to, and to do this and whatnot. And we get very little input or I would suggest that you talk to the fire chiefs or the, or their, the, the community services and say, hey, do you have, would you have somebody in your department that would wanna represent or do you know somebody in the community that would represent the fire district? I, I don't know. I mean, I would think they would have more input or more knowledge of what, what really should be advised of them, but I, I, you know, if it should be, whether, I don't think does it include or volunteer fire department members, right? I mean, you can be a member of the fire department, but not, we did this in Sebula once, right?
Yeah, wasn't there a conflict of interest with the fire chief or somebody wanted?
Talked about that, yeah, then. I'm not sure that.
Well, the chief wanted to be the representative, I think, on that one. I don't know that that's appropriate because.
Right.
I just think, I, I see how active all the volunteer fire departments are in the county. And you're talking to Andrew, Miles, Sebula, they seem to be rather rambunctious. I find it hard to believe that the only applicants we could find are ones we don't have contact information on or would kinda sorta like to do it, but I don't know how long.
Well, and quite frankly, sometimes I'm the last one to know that they have somebody new on their trustees because they just do it and they don't tell anybody.
Right, and so.
But then when Shelly comes to do budgets at this time of year, then she has to know.
Is there a deadline for those appointments?
Well, Shelly thought I should have done them a while ago because she needs them to do budgeting.
So just for clarity, these are benefited fire districts. These are kind of a rarity in the state of Iowa. Um, this was something that was voted on by all of the citizens within the district back in the seventies.
Right.
And so they do, um, like McCocon Fire Department, they have to get money from the city in McCocon. Whereas these are benefited fire districts, they actually have a levy and they, they levy and their money is directly given to them. Um, so that's what makes them different and that's why time is of the essence here because they do need to submit a budget and have it approved by everybody. So, yes, I mean, I, I wouldn't want this to go much longer, I guess. And these people have served for quite a while. It's, these people are not.
So you guys, uh, this is part, you guys actually have conversations with them?
Shelly does, yes.
Okay, so the Shelly has contact information or?
I know Steve Lukie was just in last week, so I know that she's.
Well, he's agreed to it, but the other two that I can hear is.
I know that Shelly has had conversations with John Horst. I don't know if she's had conversations with Joel Brown. That I don't know.
She says she talked to James Jacobs.
I don't know who that is.
We're just trying to get.
He's the fellow trustee for.
I guess if we do go ahead and appoint these, or even if we don't, I would still say we need to reach out to Andrew, Miles, Sebula and be like, okay, these are your appointees for your trust, you know, for your fire district. We need current contact information. Cause how do we even know Joel Brown lives within the Miles Fire District if we don't have contact information?
I, I understand that.
You know?
Um, my, my other thing that you need to understand is that we have township trustees and clerks as an example. They don't necessarily wanna give out their cellphone number and they don't have a home phone number. And so when there's a fence dispute or something, um, it's really, it's really hard to get a hold of some of these.
They're asking us to make decisions. In order for us to do this, we should at least be able to contact them to confirm, again, this gets back to, we would actually like to see written confirmation they do or do not want appointment. And I, I completely believe in that. So it isn't that I have any problem with these whatsoever. It's the fact that a confirmation that they'd actually like to be in the position, you know?
Kinda like the meeting you were at, you didn't miss the meeting, so then you were appointed to president right then, that time, yeah.
You know?
But again, I hate to appoint somebody who either one, doesn't live in the fire district anymore or two, doesn't wanna do it, but you know, James, maybe James Jacobs is going, well, I can't, I don't know of anybody else, so we're just gonna say him again.
So Lisa, can you tell me is, uh, their budget scenarios the same timeline as our budget? Okay. So is it an issue if we try to make contact, get confirmation from the two that we don't have confirmation from for next week?
I guess that's what I would suggest then is to table it and try and see if we can get the confirmation.
Yeah.
Um, for next.
So can we appoint the Andrew? So can we appoint the Andrew, um, appointee, has he already agreed to it, correct?
Yes, he called me and agreed to it.
I would make a motion to approve the Andrew benefited fire district representative and to table the other two nominees till.
Let's do two motions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Andrews.
So we have a motion by Mike, second by Ninn to approve the reappointment of Steve Lukie to the Andrew, uh, benefited fire district with a term expiring, um. When does it expire? Sorry. Is it a three-year term?
It's a three-year term, so.
So that would be twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Twelve thirty-one, twenty-seven.
Twelve thirty-one, twenty-seven. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
Now, now you want to table the other two?
Yeah, so we have two other appointments that have not been appointed, so I would make a motion to table the two appointments to the other remaining Sebula and Miles benefited fire district.
Till next week.
Till next week.
I'll second that.
You got a motion by Mike, second by Ninn to table the appointment of the Miles and Sebula benefited fire district until next week. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. I vote. I assume that we met next week at our next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And that will happen when you are not at a meeting, because you'll not be here next week.
I'm gonna, then we'll run the meeting, I'll try to zoom in, because it's just, I've heard this place has funny wifi, so I will try to, I'll, I'll try to be there.
We'll try to put anything really earth shaking on the agenda either, so.
I'll put you on that.
Um, the last bit of business I have is, um, setting a date for the Green Island Drainage District Annual Meeting. And, um, I made a suggestion to Lisa, but she didn't like that date.
While I'm gone?
But I am recommending February fourth at eleven o'clock, right after our regular meeting, um, which is what we usually do. We have been holding it in here lately rather than going downstairs, so that's up to all of you, how you want to do that.
Well, I guess my only question is, will that affect budget? You know, and I know in the.
Right on drainage?
Yeah. I'm just talking budget, because I know we'll have been, by this Thursday, we should have been through all of the departments, correct?
Yes, by the sixteen.
Okay, so then we just got to go back and start refunding numbers. Um, can you kind of put out a timeline on when we have to have decisions and everything done? I'd appreciate that. I, I guess I don't, it doesn't bother me if we do it at eleven, um, on the fourth.
I think we normally.
We do it in one of our meetings, yeah.
Right.
Probably we have that. I would make that motion that we have that meeting.
Third, wait. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm gonna finish my motion for the fourth at, um, eleven A M.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Ninn to approve setting the date for the Green Island Drainage District meeting for February fourth at eleven A M. Any other discussion? I always thought we did that at night.
I had a problem. She wanted to do it on the twenty-eighth.
That was my first suggestion.
No.
Yeah.
What's the fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something special about the twenty?
We're gonna have some extra costs.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think so when we have a nine to five year road plan, maybe what you're thinking of, and that'll be coming up in, in February.
Like I said, Roger and everybody, they compile it.
Well, they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was always, I, I guess. Okay. Cool. Anything else?
That's it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Boards and commissions reports.
I mean. We did have a nine-one-one meeting and discussed, uh, radio training, common stuff that you need to follow up with on our new radios and trying to set up a special, you know, education center here, otherwise the education forum or Indiana or Florida. Things of the, so we're gonna get a provider here to come.
Did you need to, anything?
Us?
Yeah.
No, we're, we need training too on your radios. No, no, I mean, uh, basically, bottom line is, the last email I come through yesterday, um, somewhere between, they need twelve to fifteen participants to come.
Yeah, and I think we can get that.
Yeah, I think we can too, as long as, you know, committed to it, and whether it be EMS or fire or whoever, maybe, then we have, um.
I think it's all that they can get trained and then train the trainer, I guess.
So the point is, again, these, these radios are sophisticated, if you want to say.
Well, more high-tech than.
Yeah, they're like a little computer. Yeah, so I, I mean, it needs training, and unless you do it five times a day or use it and switch from one to the other, you know, it is, it needs to be. We need to have training. We spend a lot of money to, on these radios and, um.
Need to know how to work them.
That's right.
Are you guys here to support the?
The opiate?
Okay.
That's why, that's why I'm here.
And that's a work session, so.
Work session, I think, yeah.
You want the camera on or not to record it, or you want to do it after the meeting?
I think we can do it after the meeting, huh?
Yeah.
I did go to the senior board meeting, but we kind of talked about that last week, that they're working through some of their issues. Um. And then also, I, for the Port to Be, Sir Iowa, it was kind of pushed to us that there wasn't really gonna be any funding meeting needed out of the counties.
But.
But I think that is changing, just so we have a heads up of what they're thinking, but.
Funding from us? So we were gonna give funding, that's what my perspective was.
Yeah. So, it's.
Let change both.
Complicated realm of stuff there.
Yeah, so we'll see what you can keep up with that. I know it's.
I know what they were talking about. They said anytime there would be, you know, let's say a town wanted to put in a port or something like that. It would be, they could use that to leverage to get grant money, but they would have to fill in any kind of local match need or whatever for those asking.
The last meeting, I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they were like, well, possibly it could be like twenty-five dollars per capita residents of your county or, and I'm like, I don't think we can.
Yeah, we'd have to discuss that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Anything, I guess, at some point, Don, we should schedule a work session with N E I three A. So we can kind of end the banter back and forth, so to speak, so. Um, we should look at the schedule and maybe figure a timeframe out where we could do that. So, with nothing, that being said.
I'd make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Ninn to adjourn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, vote. We are adjourned.